Mayor and Board Trustees, welcome tonight. We have with us Katie Hale, who's the Executive Director for Grand Beginnings here to provide us an update. So Katie, thank you for taking time to do that.
Mayor and Board Trustees.
No feedback. Thank you, Katie. Appreciate you.
Hey, thank you guys for having me. It's really nice to be able to talk with you in person instead of some sort of Hollywood Square scenario. I really appreciate your time and a chance to talk to you guys a little bit about, you know, our local early childhood system where our current needs are and what Grand Beginnings is doing to address them. Um, you know, I'll start out real quick here and just give the basic case for early childhood education. You know, research tells us that, you know, birth to five is by far the most critical years of human development. To not invest in these years is a humongous loss of opportunity. You know, in high-quality early childhood education, you know, this is a win for the child. This is a win for the family and the community, you know, in the immediate sense. Having availability of early education care gives families higher income, you know, opportunities immediately later on in life. This translates, you know, to the child and they're more likely to earn more, you know, and this ultimately translates to more tax revenue for communities. You know, and not only that, it's also a cost savings measure. You know, high-quality education in early childhood reduces special education later, juvenile services, lower incarceration rates, higher high school graduation. So it's a win in tax revenue. It's a reduction in costs. So it's a win-win. Um, so you know, I will start here. I'm going to use this. I'm going to talk from systems perspective. I think it's important to recognize that there's a lot of intertwining factors going on here. Young children don't exist in vacuums. They exist in families and families don't exist in vacuums either. They exist in communities and they really depend on those services and supports that communities provide to be successful and be able to contribute and work in society. So I'm going to use this figure. This is actually from the Colorado Early Childhood Framework, which has existed in the state since 2008. As kind of a schematic to drive, you know, guide us through and really try to paint a picture of our local community. If you want to flip the slide here, you know, we'll start, you know, with our, our, you know, overview of our state and local system. We have just under 700 kids, 700 kids under age five in Grand County. That translates to only 259 licensed early childcare slots. So doing the math for you there. That's 39% or just under 40% of kids have access to a licensed slot, which means 60% of kids do not have access to licensed care. Um, little more on that. We have nine center-based programs and two programs that are licensed within families' homes. You know, what I will say and something to really celebrate is that eight out of our nine center-based programs in Grand County are rated high quality. That's considered a level three to five in Colorado shines, and that's a huge accomplishment. So I'll break this down a little further for you guys here. I broke this down by age because I think it's telling. If you look at the percentage of children in our population who can be served through preschool age slots, we're looking at 62%. If we move down in age to toddler care, we're looking at 34% of toddlers can possibly be served. And then strikingly, when we look at infant care, we're looking at only 19% of children can possibly be served. So we're looking at really four out of five families who don't have access to infant care when they need it. So that's, that's quite striking. You know, moving forward, if we look through, through my schematic here, you know, we're going to look, you know, more in, break this down by neighborhood and look at this from a geographical standpoint, because that's very significant in Grand County. On the next slide here, I broke this down for you by East and West Grand, you know, from Granby over to Winter Park and then Hot Sulphur over. So we have eight licensed centers in East Grand and three in West Grand. The majority of our slots are in East Grand, although that's still pretty inadequate for the number of children that we have. As you can see in West Grand, the situation is even more dire. Grand Lake is not on here. Grand Lake actually has zero licensed care for any age group. So I wanted to paint the picture for you here, you know, so kind of giving you some of these basic numbers. I think, you know, as a quick takeaway, on the pro side, we have excellent, excellent quality early childhood programs here for what we do have. In fact, you know, we have a higher proportion of four and five-star licensed programs than we do in any other proportion-wise than any other early childhood council in the entire state. So we really, really shine there and that's, that's a fantastic asset. But, you know, from a systems perspective, we really do have a problem, you know, when it comes to supply and access and availability. You know, Grand Beginnings really stands behind the philosophy that all families know what's best for their children. And we really, you know, we respect, you know, families' decision whether they want to put their child in care or not. And we have multitude of services to serve all types of family regardless of their decision. That said, you know, at least from Grand Beginnings' perspective, we really feel that for families that choose or want the option to put their kid in care, that should be an option. And right now, you know, for a lot of families, the reality is, is that's not where we're at. You know, we have wait lists in every single one of our centers right now. I think these are the high, the largest numbers on waitlist I have seen, at least since I've been here, at least in a decade, and maybe highest we've ever seen. In some centers, we have more than 40 kids waiting, waiting on a list and the lists are not, the waitlists are not moving quickly. So I want to unpack this a little further with you in the next slide, because I think it's important to go into the whys just briefly here. You know, I want to talk about licensing and what it might, you know, easy to say, okay, we need more centers. Yeah, you know, it's, it's, it's not super simple, you know, to, for a center to be operating like, you know, legally or even in a family childcare home, anybody taking care of more than four kids, you know, to be legal, you have to be licensed. And licensing is really, really important. You know, it's really the only regulatory mechanism we have to ensure that kids are safe and healthy when they're left in care. You know, I think a knee-jerk reaction is often like, oh, let's just get rid of some of this regulation and that'll, that'll, you know, that'll fix it. But, you know, the reality is, is that the large majority of adverse outcomes that happen, you know, happen in unlicensed care or when a program is violating licensing, you know, regulations. So they are, they are more than just red tape and bureaucracy. It's really important. You know, as, as important as licensing is, it's really an involved process. So we can't just make these programs, you know, sprout up overnight. You know, for example, if there's capital improvements that need to be made to make an environment safe for kids, that can take up to eight months. You know, and I'll also mention that licensing is really, really the bare minimum. You know, there is a whole quality rating system throughout the state, as I mentioned, that we really excel in in this community and licensing is just the bottom. So to really open a center and have it operating at a high-quality level for kids and families in the community. You know, this, it's really a process and it's really something that has to be cultivated over time. So I just wanted to highlight some of the nuances of that. You know, and to unpack this further, we'll move kind of down our schematic to the relationship level here to talk about caregivers and teachers a little bit more. On the next page here, you know, I have, I want to talk a little bit about early childhood professionals. You know, first point I want to make, early childhood teachers are highly, highly specialized. I really want to emphasize that these are professionals. We have 49 early childhood teachers in Grand County right now. 61% of them are at a level three or higher. So there's quality rating system for programs. And then there's also a professional development rating or credential system for providers. And, you know, you climb up both those ranks, you know, in order to be a high-quality program. And so to have more than the majority at a very high level is, is, is huge, you know. But even to get a teacher in the classroom at a bare minimum and, and not climbing up these professional development levels, it really takes a lot. We're talking fingerprints, background checks, 15 hours of pre-service training has to be done every single year. CPR, first aid, med admin, that has to be kept current constantly. Not to mention lesson planning, just to get a teacher in the classroom alone and, you know, with, without another person there. They need either a bachelor's or associate's degree in a certain, you know, area or a CDA, that's a Child Development Associate Credential. All of those take hundreds of hours, you know, in addition to curriculum trainings, other basic trainings, just to run a high-quality program. Depending on the program, those trainings can take up to 10 to 15 full days to do. And that's again, just the minimums. There's more when programs are going through quality ratings or if that teacher wants to climb up that professional development credential system. So it's, it's really a lot. We ask a ton of these, you know, these, again, these, these really are professionals. And, you know, which leads to my second point is given all of that, you know, these people are not adequately compensated. If you're looking at the averages in Grand County between an assistant or a lead teacher, somewhere between 28,000 and 33,000 a year. It's not enough. On top of that, you know, basic benefits are, are not guaranteed. They're inconsistent depending on which program you're in and comprehensive benefits, as we would expect them in some other jobs where professionals are, are very scarce. You know, and my third point, when I'm thinking about early childhood teachers in this, in the system here, is that the number of teachers that we have really, really matters. So when we're operating these programs and we're talking about the number of slots we have, there's very specific ratios that need to be met. So for example, there needs to be one teacher for every four infants in a program. Needs to be one teacher for every eight preschool-aged kids in a program. You know, and it's very specific. So this isn't a situation, you know, like a server in a restaurant where you could just give them more tables or, you know, it doesn't work like that. You can't operate a center like that. It's, it's not even legal, not to mention high quality. You know, so, so there's some inherent, you know, issues with this, this part of the system too, when we think of teachers. You know, you know, right now, the system's basically relying on goodwill, you know. I mean, it's true that these, these teachers, you know, they do have good hearts and they do, you know, like kids. But to just rely on that alone without compensating them is, is first of all, not ethical, but second of all, it's just not working. So we have job openings at 100% of our centers regularly. You know, and, you know, I'll mention with the exception of the licensed program at the resort. They, every single one of our licensed centers are, operate on a nonprofit status or under the guise of the public school system. So very, very, very tight margins, very restricted budgets. It's not just an option to raise wages. Believe me, directors would if they could find the space in their budget to do so. Because, you know, I think everybody understands that, that this needs to happen. You know, and, and then we obviously know where the employment situation in the county is right now. I mean, everybody's hiring. You know, and I'll, I'll say housing and I won't say more because we all know, you know, and, and I think, I think the issue here, you know, just to point out in the extreme irony, is that right now we're in a situation where early childhood programs are competing with other employers to fill these jobs. And it's extremely ironic because the truth is, is that all these other employers in the county really need these positions to be filled and so they can fill their positions. I mean, if we make the assumption that every parent, you know, that both parents work when, for these children that are in care, you know, for every preschool teacher we hire, that's 16 potential parents who can go out into the workforce and take a job for every one of those positions we, we fill. So this is, this is really about leveraging, you know, the economy and it's, it's a huge point. So, you know, just going back to our early childhood supply issue, you know, it's not just about the number of programs we have. If you really want to increase slots, it's also about the number of teachers that we can A, get qualified through all of that stuff and B, you know, retain. So, you know, I'll move into a third aspect of the system. I just wanted to highlight and that's, you know, at the level of the family and the child. Because, you know, there, there's, you know, another key point to point out. And that is that, you know, the cost of care in Grand County is extremely high. We are the fifth highest cost of care for any county. In Grand County, and in state of Colorado, we're looking at upwards of 13,000 for infant care a year for full-time care and a little bit upwards of 10,000 for preschool care. You know, and if we look at the average wages instead of income for Grand County, I love to highlight that number because I think it illustrates the reality for young working families a little bit more than our income number. But we're looking at just under 38,000 a year in a county where our self-sufficiency is close to 71,000 a year. So these numbers just, you know, they, they don't add up, especially, you know, for a young family, you know, the cost of care is more than we're looking at for a lot of public universities. You know, for years of tuition and instead families have nine months to get this money together instead of 18 years. You know, so there's some logistical issues at a family level here. You know, and so I can't, you know, I wanted to paint this picture, you know, and really use this schematic to really show you, you know, there's, there's very different dynamics going on at each levels here from, you know, broader system to programs, teachers, to families. And all of it is really intertwined, you know, and it kind of, it brings up one of my favorite early childhood slogans that, you know, everyone is dependent on someone who depends on childcare. You know, because it really doesn't matter if you have young kids or not, you know, early childhood development and working on this overall system is, is really key economic development. You know, so with that, I wanted to talk to you guys a little bit about Grand Beginnings and just, you know, for those of you who aren't aware, let you know who we are, what we do and what we're working on to really, you know, work on, on, on some of the issues that we're seeing right now. So Grand Beginnings, we're a nonprofit. You know, our mission is to promote school readiness, you know, we foster, you know, early learning, healthy child development and family success. We serve all of Granite Jackson County. I won't go into it. There's only one program in Jackson County and we took, we took them under our wing because somebody needed to. We also serve as the Granite Jackson Early Childhood Council. So early childhood councils are in Colorado State statute. I believe there's 34 of them throughout the state. And, you know, really the concept is, you know, we are, as pointed, we really look at things from a system perspective. We really bring a lot of diverse stakeholders and community constituents together to work on diverse aspects of this system. Because it's not Grand Beginning System, this is really for the community. And so we work heavily with a lot of partners to achieve our mission. I'll talk a little bit more about specifically what we do and what our services we provide to the community. We, we have a really tight program to admin ratio. So most of the, almost large majority of the money we take in goes directly back out to the community. And I broke this out by our strategic priority areas. I'll, I'll sum this up. I want to make sure we have time for questions. But, um, so, you know, our first priority area is child health and development. You know, really working on preventive oral health, hearing, vision, developmental screenings, referral systems, working at immunization, safe sleep, you know, physical health, healthy food environments. Really looking at that from a comprehensive point of view for young children to make sure it works on, these systems are working on the ground for families and that families aren't falling through the cracks. Because if people aren't working on that, that's, that's typically what happens, especially in a rural area like ours. We put on average at a very minimum of just under 70,000 in just our health priority alone towards that in the community. Our second strategic priority area is early childhood mental health supports. Early childhood mental health is a huge need in our community right now. And when it comes to early childhood, that's an area that we really are committed to really make, you know, do some damage on. So we, we have a full-time early childhood mental health consultant on staff. And she works very hard to provide resources, trainings, free mental health consultation within early childhood programs to families and with children to make sure that, you know, young, young children's mental health needs are met. This priority, we probably put out just under, at a minimum every year, 80,000 a year to the community. And then our third priority, and I talked about a lot of this, you know, as we were going through our systems perspective, is early care and education workforce and environments. We do a ton of work here because, you know, as I kind of illustrated, this, this system needs help. You know, so we provide a ton of training within early childhood programs, free coaching, professional development. You know, we pay for a lot of college classes for these early childhood professionals to take and climb up those professional development scales, understanding that with what they make, there's no reasonable expectation to have that pain, to have them paying for that on their own. We provide a ton of quality improvement dollars to individual licensed programs so they can pay for all the materials and curriculum and supports they need to make it to these high-quality levels, you know, and, and this is a huge part of our work, making sure that they're supported and they know somebody's fighting on their side. So, you know, this is just on about 168,000 minimum a year we put out directly to these programs and services and materials. And on our last priority area, you know, I mentioned it's not just, you know, early childhood programs and families in those, but we serve all families regardless if they're in early childhood programs or not. And we, you know, so our last priority is family and caregiver support and education. We provide a lot of engagement and education opportunities for families. We also feel it's really important to provide leadership and advocacy opportunities for families so that they have a stake and a say in this system as we're working on it. They're one of our most important stakeholders. And then I think probably our biggest program within this priority area is our community tuition assistance program. Because families have to pay so much for care, we give somewhere between 60 and 75,000. In upcoming years, we're budgeting and trying to fundraise for closer to 100,000 to give directly to programs. That those programs give that money directly to families to pay for tuition so that they can afford to keep their children in care. We support families up to 300% federal poverty level for that, understanding that, you know, again, just going back to self-sufficiency and stuff. You know, you can be earning quite a bit and still really be struggling to make ends meet and really get your needs met with early care and education. Last year, we served 72 families alone, and this is the sixth year we've run our community tuition program. So looking to grow that. You know, it's not just the needs that, you know, that are currently in our system right now. Grand Beginnings is systems builders. We're also looking a lot to the future and future growth. So, you know, one of the things I'll just put on your radar and certainly heavily on our radar right now is Proposition EE that was passed in November 2020 by Colorado, by an overwhelming majority of voters. And in 2023, money coming in from that is going to go towards universal preschool. You know, which is going to be great. This supports children in their year before kindergarten and helps, you know, pay for a portion of, of their care every year. A lot of other states have had this already and it's great that Colorado's finally making that leap. That said, you know, and you can probably glean, you know, just because a proposition is passed, doesn't mean the system automatically steps up and is there to, you know, support that. So there's a lot of, you know, a lot of things we have our eye on as we move forward. You know, if we are ready or struggling to meet capacity, how are we going to accommodate 100% of preschoolers now when they're coming up and ready, you know, ready to access with this system? How are we going to get teachers, you know, to support these kids? How are we going to deal with Grand County's unique geography? Because a universal preschool slot in Kremlin isn't going to serve a family in Frazier, you know, and meet their needs and vice versa, you know, and, and most importantly, or it's something that's really on my mind is, you know, if we're going to incentivize preschool care, looking at where we're at with toddler and infant care, how do we make sure to avoid unintended consequences and not incentivize infant care? We cannot afford to lose any infant slots, but there's certainly a risk if this isn't done carefully that by funding preschool slots, you could inadvertently de-incentivize having, you know, you, people could want to turn their infant slots to preschool care because the money's there for that. So again, there's a lot of factors in the system, you know, that we need to really advocate for and provide leadership for, you know, as, as this community and the rest of the state steers into this. You know, I wanted to put that forward as, as an example. So, you know, we're not just tackling the current needs, but really looking forward to future needs too. So, you know, with that, I'll, I'll stop talking. I just want to really thank you guys and also thank the town of Frazier for the support you give us. It really helps us to continue to provide these services, but I also think it says a lot that you guys, you know, it really, your support shows that early childhood is a priority for you guys and that you really understand that early childhood is economic development for the community. And I just think that's really commendable. So, um, so thank you guys. And I love if you guys have any questions to address those. That's my contact information as well. So if we don't get to stuff, I'd love to continue conversation with you guys.
Thanks, Katie. Questions, comments?
Thank you. Grand Beginnings is fabulous. They do really good work and I, I think our childcare facilities are awesome. Outside of this, what's it look like for children entering kindergarten, first grade? Does our school district have the capacity with this increase in students? Do you have any idea?
You know, I know they are having a space constraint issue particularly. I know it's, I think it's in both school districts, but particularly in East Grand, you know, I've spoke, I know Frank has spoken on this with the school district several times, you know, and I think, you know, so I, you know, and I, I mean, really they're moving around and really struggling to even find space. You know, to even put kids, which seems like a basic problem. So, so, so there is a need there for sure. Also just really hoping that, you know, I think they're making some gains and able to compensate their teachers and continue to hopefully compensate their teachers appropriately, which I think is fantastic. And I think that should help to recruit, but, but again, I think with recruitment of, of, of anybody right now, there's always that housing issue. So, so yeah, so there's definitely some issues, you know, in, in the young K through 12 space as well.
So we had a funding request on the table. I thought that's next. Okay. Okay. So one, Katie and I had a conversation about one innovative, possible innovative long-term funding solution would be an alcohol tax. Fairly minimal, but could generate a lot of revenue and we, the mayor and I talked a little bit about the disparity between the tax on pot and the tax on alcohol, how much lower alcohol is. And I think one of the keys to, to substance abuse, preventing it in the first place is, is early childhood education and the, the ability to make decisions early on and, and to grow outside yourself. I mean, I was kind of telling Katie, Kate, Katie, Kate, Katie and Katie, Katie, and I sat, ran a Corona healthcare center or Corona. I think we changed, education center when we changed into a nonprofit. But, but I think the point of childcare is to take a, a person who's completely self-centered, an infant, and turn them into a human being that shares and, and understands that the world does not revolve around them. And unfortunately, there's a hell of a lot of adults out there that still haven't gotten that, you know, and, but it's key. You're right. I mean, these, these first years are key. And I think that a long-term funding solution, and this would have to be, the, I've been on, I'm, the, I've been on, I'm, I would hope maybe our, maybe Ed, you could model some of this for us. I believe it's possible. I don't know if it's a voter initiative or what, we could do some modeling on what kind of revenue it might generate, but, yeah, but, yeah, yeah. Anyway, just an idea, you know. Yeah. It's just, yeah.
So. Every square foot of the house or building is built too.
What's that? I'm sorry?
We could add a tax to every house that's built too.
Well, cost of housing is already really high, I mean.
So is the cost of liquor.
Well. But I, I need a house to live. I don't need liquor to live, so. Yeah, so anyway, this is an idea. Yep, just an idea. But I think we're, I think we're searching for a robust, long-term funding solution for, for this, and part of this is going to come from the state, but, but obviously this lot, a large part of it needs to come from the community, so. But I really support what you're doing.
Thank you. Thank you. Yeah. No, I think sustainability and solutions geared towards that are, is key. There's going to be some immediate windfalls coming, you know, from these, you know, from the CURSA and the American Rescue Plan, you know, stimulus funds, both of those mention early childhood. And that'll be great for getting us out of the hole that we've kind of fell into. I mean, childcare, the business model for childcare was already stressed before COVID, and now, I mean, we have lost, I think in a state, almost up to one-third of programs in some areas. So it, it really further, has further stressed programs significantly. So this stimulus, I mean, i- it's going to be great, but it is just a stimulus. It'll help us out of the hole that we've fallen into, but for, for sustain, you know, I, it's really on my radar that, you know, when those stimulus funds are fully spent down in twenty twenty-three, that we're looking towards sustainability and not just going right back to where we are today. So, so yeah, that's very commendable.
Thanks, Katie.
Hey, thank you very much.
You know, being a young mom in this county, I was a tearjerker almost. Can imagine.
Hey, we are now. I don't know. I get normal. I always got a thumbs up from. Antonette, you want to give me a thumbs up? It's ready to go. There we go. I'd like to call to order the town of Frazier's regular board meeting on June sixteen, twenty twenty-one at seven. Can I please have a roll call?
Katie Fisher.
Andy Miller.
Arnold Quinn.
Katie Souls.
Philip Vanderneil. Can I have an approval? Can I have a motion for the approval of the agenda?
I would move to approve the agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, which includes the minutes from June second and resolution twenty twenty-one zero six zero four, Frazier Valley Metropolitan Recreation District, IGA?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Now we are at discussion of possible action regarding ordinance for, for dissolution of water wastewater committee.
So this is an item that has been discussed and for you is a, a staff briefing with the proposed ordinance to make the changes to the town code to remove the water wastewater committee at the stand of the code. And I have had informal conversations with the three members that we have that are not board members who are still interested in providing counsel as needed for water wastewater matters. So their concerns have, they, they did have some concerns with this too, that they want voiced, and those have been provided. And if they will like, would you like to provide them the opportunity to?
Yeah. Love to have them.
Yes.
Ronnie, Bob, Dennis, who wants to go first?
Hi, everybody. Congratulations, Ed, on your appointment. I just have a couple things. Thanks for everything, the, the support. I kind of hate to see it go by the wayside. We used to have some really good meetings, but it seemed like in the last couple of years, they, they started to slide and we just didn't get a whole lot accomplished, so I can see where the thinking went on wanting to do away with this. But y'all know me, y'all know how I stand, and you know, I'm all in, but I really think a lot about the water wastewater in the town, and, and there's a lot of work to do. You guys have a lot of work to do besides water and wastewater, think about every month. But I want to reiterate a couple of things that I brought up in January when we had that special meeting. We just can't be giving away our water and wastewater, especially right now, and that six hundred thousand that, some dollars that we let kind of go down the drain with the multifamily and the housing project out there. We cannot be letting that go every time forty to sixty units come up, because the water wastewater funds just can't take that kind of hit every, every year. And I know I've talked to some of you about it, so you're all well-versed about it. And you, you guys are the water and sand board. And I know there's a lot of big decisions to be made, and there's going to be probably more coming up, the way things are going in the West and in the Valley and everything else, as dry as it's been, so. We just got to really stay on top of it. Yeah, I keep saying we, because I just feel part of it all, so. But we just got to keep moving forward and be thinking about it all the time, because we don't want to get ourselves in a position. I understand public service is up tech next. We, we don't want to put ourselves in that kind of position. And going back to the, the money, I think we ought to put a little moratorium or freeze wages on multifamily for a while till we can all get this straight, and we're not letting all that money kind of slip away. But other than that, we, we accomplished a lot. You know, these guys are here, the other former member that I want to mention, Steve Summerall, he was a big asset to that committee starting off, so, plus he was on the town board, so just want to mention his name. Thanks for letting me speak.
Thank you, Ron. Thank you.
Dennis or Bob?
Well, as you all know, we've all lived here a long time, and we've seen this valley grow from, from nothing, basically, when I was a kid here, to where it's just booming right now, more than we've ever witnessed before. Water is, and sewer is a big thing. Ron and I and Dennis have, we've been fighting, you won't say fighting, but we've been trying to always come to the best decisions for the valley for the last thirty-five years. You know, as I came down from Winter Park, you know, I was the president of Grand County Water and Sewer for twenty-five years. And so we had a lot of disagreements over the years. We, we did, got a lot of things together and, and then to the treatment plant now and everything else, so. So I'm not surprised, you know, it's time for, time for us to pass the reins along. We're all spending other times doing other things and, and not in the valley all the time, but. So, yeah, I thank you for the opportunity to serve here. It was, it was an honor to serve here with Frazier. I learned a lot more about the Frazier sanitation and water with my last couple of years here, so. Which I always didn't know from being up the street, but otherwise, thank you very much. Good luck with everything.
Thanks. Thanks, Bob.
Hello, Dennis Souls. I want to thank you all for the appointments to the committee, and the committee got a lot done, seemed like we were more or less utilized as a tool for the staff to, or a sounding board for the staff. And I would like the town council to, the town board to keep water and wastewater in the forefront of your decision-making, because it's, it's a very great asset, and we need to take advantage of it. And thanks again. Good luck.
Any other discussion?
Has, as I understand it, there's several properties or maybe only one property that's not in the town, that's in the district, that's in. I didn't see anything to resolve that in the resolution.
Refresh my memory, we, there was one, there was one parcel of property, I think you've mentioned last time.
I, I don't know if it's one. Ron? The two districts don't line up perfectly.
The water and sand?
Yeah, the water and sand district and the town.
I thought that was all big care years ago, so.
Okay.
But things may have changed in the last ten years. I don't know.
No, I would.
We worked at it a lot. On the sand district and then your best when he was, he was on sand district mayor, you really worked to try to have everything aligned so we're one. But have, have there been any new annexations or?
No, no, it, it's, it's history, whatever I'm talking about.
I'm not sure I understand how it relates to this ordinance. What?
It doesn't.
So here's what we can do. We can follow up a little bit, and Joe might know too, and maybe Ron, if he's around for a, for, for, yeah.
I, I don't.
It's an unincorporated Grand County, but it's serviced by sewer, I believe.
So I don't mind having a follow-up conversation with Joe. I think it's pertaining to the ordinance. We should be okay, but we can certainly follow up on that.
Okay. Any further comments?
I, I think we had a, we had a discussion, and it's not formal, obviously, but I hope you guys stay on as an advisory committee. I mean, the, the, the strides that have been taken in your day and Bob when, and Kirk Clanky and the group put us onto a consolidated wastewater plant, I mean, everybody that's dissolved, not dissolved, but gotten special districts to work together knows what a heavy lift that was. And it was far sighted, and we're, and it was just nice to go by the ponds today, and NSCD was out there on pond number two or pond number one. I'm not sure which one it was, but anyway, they were out boating. I know, but that's, that's why, but, but that's, that's why Bob, we call them one and two, just to be slightly less obvious about it. But it was, it was really heartening, you know, I mean, those are downtown assets and both, for both communities. Yeah, Grand County number one is, is, has granted us a lot of recreation access to those and, and what was a liability became an asset, so. And that's just one example, and, and I know, Ron, we've talked a lot, there's a long ways we need to go with, with our town infrastructure and old town and our old pipes and things that we've, we've really got to address, and as we begin to look at our street projects and our paving and things we need to do, because the pavement's starting to wear out. It's hard to believe. That's been twenty years, I guess, so. So, as we, before we do that, last time when we did it, we thought we should have replaced these lines before we put this pavement down. Well, let's do it this time at least, you know, let's not get brand-new pavement over lines that we need to, need to be upgrading. So anyway, I'm hoping we can call on you guys, because there's just a wealth of knowledge here that, that this town really needs, and I think you're right, Dennis, I mean, it's, it is without, without water and wastewater, obviously, we're not a community. I mean, if we can't serve people with good clean drinking water and give them a place to go, then we're in a lot of trouble. So, thanks.
Yeah.
Yeah, you can come up to the mic though.
People are listening, so.
I'm sorry. To answer your question, or what you comment on it being advisory, we've discussed this a little bit with board members and us three. To advise properly, you know, we really need the information. And that's kind of what we went around and round about the last year, maybe two years on the committee. Your information wasn't coming down, so we couldn't really make proper decisions. And so how, how would that come about? You know, we want to be advisors and want to help, but we also, we need to be more in contact with staff. Staff needs to be in contact with us or something's coming up. We have a few weeks to talk about it or think about it before we come up, because you, you know, a lot of these decisions just don't happen overnight. We got to talk about them and maybe do some research. And it may take a month, may take two months to come up with proper advice and, and proper direction. So that's a question I have, just something for y'all to think about. I know you don't, you know, don't have the answers right now, but that's just one bridge I think we need to cross before we really get into it.
Well, I'm going to vote against it, because I don't think it's the right time or the right way to do this. And yes, the last couple of years have been rotten preparation given to the committee, and there's a wealth of information there, and even if we only had quarterly meetings, these are the watchdogs of our system, and the rest of us don't have that. So.
Anybody else? Motion? Oh, okay. Guess we don't meet the next agenda item. There's no motion on the table.
Well.
Looks like you guys are sticking around.
You want to say raise.
A pay raise, is that what?
Okay, so, well, just.
So, so, so we're not going to thank you for serving, and we're going to, we're going to put the plaques back on the shelf, is what it sounds like.
So I think, so I will say this, so in front of you, you basically have two fundamental decisions. You can either move forward and disband this, move to ad hoc committee, or, or you can let it stand, but if you let it stand and move forward, I, you know, of course, I'm on the way out the door, but I strongly encourage that there be a meeting, so expectations are aligned, so the committee serves at the pleasure of the board, which is important. But it's also important that the committee understand their role or scope, their purpose. Clearly, there's been some, some information issues that haven't been passed down. So if that's the case, it might be conducive at some future meeting, at some future workshop for there to be kind of a joint conversation about what that looked like in preparation for that, and this is at the end, of course, but it might be warranted for staff, particularly Ed, maybe to engage the committee, try to get a little history on it, try to figure out what might be a, a plan and scope moving forward. So again, there's two, two kind of prongs of attack. Previously, you kind of directed us to move forward this direction. That's fine. It's the council's pleasure. If you decide that you don't want to do that, then, then I think being intentional about what you do want to do with this particular group, how you want them to serve, what that looks like is, is equally important. So I'll just leave it at that.
I'll say that Wes read my mind. And get that history, get that information, because I'm, I'm all about sustainability within an organization and making sure that the water and sewer, those two obligations really sustain any growth that we have. Yeah, if there's this committee, I think the staff needs to be in discussion with that, make sure that we meet your expectations and provide the information you need, so you can be that, that extra arm of, or the extension staff. You've got probably more experience and knowledge.
So do you want to still maintain the committee?
We haven't had a meeting.
Protocol or?
Clear about, I think they're pretty clear about wanting to maintain the committee.
Okay.
The thing.
I, I think what, what I think, what I think has happened is that, is that what they said is exactly true, that the past two years, it was, it was not managed correctly. And, and if we, if we, and that's how it's got to where it is now, that if it's not managed correctly, it's failing. And that's what was happening, and I think that's, it wasn't me that brought this up, but if it's not, if it's not managed correctly, then there, it makes no sense to have it. So, and I think that's, that's how we got here. So it needs to be managed correctly and moving. So, and I think that's, that's how we got here, so it needs to be managed correctly and moving forward. And I'm all in favor of it because I think that the board has enough on their plate. And this is what a committee is for, this is like our economic development committee, we've, we've tapped into our economic development committee or our public arts committee. What other committees are we talking?
Those are the big ones.
Yeah, and, and we, we use them very well, and I think we have not used this committee well at all, and if, if we want to keep it, then we need to use it and, and give it good direction, so.
So are the plaques dated, can we still give them appreciation?
We're going to give them, we're going to, it's going to be out.
Is there an ending date on them?
Where, where are those plaques?
Well, that's why this stuff got brought up, is we haven't had a meeting well before COVID.
Yeah.
Right, and the meetings we did have, they were just talks, not real meetings of anything to change, that's why we brought it up to dissolve the committee because we're not doing anything on the committee level.
We need to have the proper tools to make any kind of decisions, they weren't, can't really move forward with anything if it don't have the proper information.
And we've had one change that'll make a big difference.
Okay, I think we don't, because we have a long night ahead, I don't think we need to go any further because, because I really respect what you guys have done in the past and what you, what you're going to do for us in the future, so I was going to vote now too, so.
Good, we didn't even talk about it.
Yeah, we didn't even talk about it, so I'm glad you, you came out with that, so. If there's not a motion.
Then it fails.
Then it fails.
So put the plaques in a box somewhere.
We can still thank them.
Well, they can still get the plaques. I mean, how many years have they put in?
It does read, you know, Frazier, this is a very nice plaque. In grateful appreciation for your years of service to the Town of Frazier and the Water and Wastewater Committee, it's not necessarily past tense.
No.
It can be similar to commendation than anything.
All right.
Perfect, okay, thank you, thank you.
So think of it as a reenlistment form, for those who served in the military, you've been, you've been called back to active duty, how's that?
We actually moved on to our thank you to the water.
Yes, we did.
We're still thanking, and if you guys could show up in actual shoes, not flip flops and crutches. Just tell the other committees how we gave them words. We thank, thank you guys.
Seriously.
I'm glad, I'm glad it ended the way it hasn't.
Thank you for your service.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks a lot.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, and now, where are we at?
Excel.
Excel Energy, so this is, we don't, the, the water and wastewater is not, what's going to slow down, it's the, the gas apparently, it's going to slow down our development moving forward, so where is Excel? So we have water, but.
He's waiting there.
All of these squares.
Okay, welcome, Excel Energy. You want to go ahead and just, do we need any introductions or just move forward?
No, I think we're just relying on them to give us an update on basically what was presented last night at Winter Park, so we appreciate you coming tonight to the meeting.
Thank you so much, thank you, Mr. Mailer and distinguished members of the Board of Trustees, thank you so much for having us tonight. We know that there are a lot of questions that are coming about from where there, there are scarce constraints or capacity, so we're here tonight to answer those questions as well as let you know what our plan is to move forward and how we plan to partner with our customers' community as well as the Board of Trustees for the Town of Frazier, as well as give you more information on how it impacts you directly. If I will take a moment here to share my screen so that I can tell you more about who is joining us for this conversation tonight. So if you can see my screen, okay, which I hope you can, can you see it, okay?
Yes.
Yes.
Great, so I am Ife Jennings, the area manager of community relations for Grand County. And with me tonight, I have Kelly Flanagan, who is the director of community relations. I also have Steve Marks, who is the senior director of gas engineering, and Pete Schmidt, who, Peter Schmidt, Schmidt is the senior manager of design. And so Kelly will walk us through the slide deck that we have for you tonight, and then as a group, we will help answer any questions that you have as a board, as members of the board. So I will hand it over to Kelly Flanagan.
Thank you, Ife, thank you, Mayor and trustees for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. I'm, I'm well aware that, that you are well aware of the gas capacity issues that are impacting the region, Winter Park and Frazier, and I wanted to just take a little bit of time to go through a presentation, but most importantly, to be able to offer our ability to answer questions that you may have or that you may have heard. So what you see in front of you here is the impacted area in yellow that is impacted by our ga, our current gas system and, and is really under a moratorium right now. So where it really impacts, I think the Town of Frazier is, is kind of on the northernmost point of this map, kind of between County Road eight and five is really up there. And it's hard for us to really talk in specific details tonight around if what project, if this project is impacted or not. So I do want to really encourage people who are listening or those of you who may be having particular projects under consideration to reach out to us so we can answer the very specific questions that you may have for this through our application process. And as we move forward, I know it's a very obvious question of how did we get here? Ife, can you advance our slide? So really, what it boils down to is that there were very rapid increases in gas capacity need that really did supersede and outpace the development models that we have been using internally within the company. And so really, what we knew about that was that our, our models were not really reflective of what we were seeing in the, in the community and what you all were seeing from a growth perspective. The other thing that I do think is really important to share is that because of the way our company is structured and regulated by the Colorado Public Utilities Commission, it really limits our ability to kind of make these proactive capital investments and really we need to know that it's tied to a project that is funded and moving forward so that it protects the rest of Colorado ratepayers from what we call a lot of times a stranded asset. And so it makes it hard for us to kind of build on a forecast and I think that those two pieces combined have really brought us to the position that we're in today. So I know the next question is, well, how are we going to move forward with our current customers? And what does this mean for us as we sit here today? So I do want to make sure that everybody understands that our current customers that are on the system right now, existing customers, they are not going to be impacted. Their gas service will continue either through the use of CNG trucks that you see kind of below, that I know that your community is familiar with as we've had them in years past. What these do is they really kind of provide some additional capacity to the system as we can inject that in, that, to the gas system. Also, in your area, we're looking at the possibility of a temporary compressor station, which is represented in the picture above, kind of that semi-trailer looking piece. We're not exactly all the way positive about how all these pieces will fit and work together, but we are looking at all of these components in order to help us meet the demand of the customers that are on the system right now, through the winter especially. We are working closely with our team and as well as public safety and the fire chief for the county around how we can provide this in a safe way, these, these CNG trucks, they are manned either by Excel Energy crews or by our third party vendor who provides the CNG vehicles. And we work closely to make sure that we are minimizing visual impact of those. And similarly with the compressor station that you see on the top, we are working closely to make sure that we can follow and fall within the sound and the noise ordinances that, that you all have. We do think that this, right now, we're kind of contemplating that the compressor station might be on some property that we own nearby the Safeway. And we expect that we will be able to fill you in as we kind of check the, check the boxes to make sure that this is going to be a good solution for us moving, moving forward for this winter. So if we can go to the next slide, Ife, please. So the big question is, what is the solution and what is this go forward plan? And so what we are, are working on and what you see here, it's kind of hard to see, so I'm going to point out a few pieces for you, that the purplish pink line that's kind of, thank you, that's going down right there is our existing gas main line. And we need to connect that in and you see that represented in the bottom portion of the map in this kind of peach route here. This was originally slated to be a four inch high pressure steel reinforcement. As we've been out in the crew, in the field and really talking with and, and really analyzing the applications that we have, we've already made the determination that we need to upsize that further to a six inch and we are doing some additional work right now, Steve's team, to be able to determine whether or not it needs to be upsized even further, possibly to an eight inch. So the piece I'd like to point out with this peach route here is that it does go through the Forest Service property, we do need to go go through that Forest Service permitting process. We do believe this is the most, the most straightforward route. We, we looked at several different routes and how, how it might work, both from a constructibility perspective and also from how we can build this system without impacting the development in the area in a negative way. So this is really what we're looking at right now and, and plan to move forward with this process. And we were, I'm really appreciative and would extend my appreciation to you and to the county and the town, Winter Park, that we, we will, we will work together to expedite permitting through the Forest Service to the extent that we are able to do that. And then if we can move to the next slide, please, Ife. Actually, wait, before we do that, I'm sorry, go back, there were a couple of other pieces that I did want to mention. So this, this line here, this, this peach line here, it, it really is going to resolve the capacity constraint that, that we have. And so the company, the company is funding this project, it's an important project for us, and I just wanted to make sure to touch on that. So now we can move to the next slide that really does sort of differentiate our customer base a little bit because we, we consider customers in a bunch of different categories. And, and so we've classified those for you here. Our in-flight customers are those that we really consider to have an application with us, but not necessarily a contract for construction. So, so we know that they've applied for service and we're working on how to do that. Our new customers are, an application is in place and a contract is also in place. And then we've got future customers, those that we don't know about, from the application perspective, maybe we've heard anecdotally that it's going to happen or, or it's truly something that we're unaware of at this point, but we want to, and then of course, as I mentioned, our current customers. So those are kind of the buckets that we're, that we're classifying our customers in. What I think is really important to, to, to talk about on this slide here is that we are committed to working with our customers regardless of where you are in this process, so that we can really discuss your project timelines, we can understand your status. And then when we're able to, on a case by case basis, really looking to find those opportunities where we can partner with that, with that project in order to maintain construction continuity and really minimize an impact that, that could be seen on a construction schedule. So we are working very closely and are committed to working very closely with all of our customers to, to be able to facilitate that in any way that we can as we build forward this, this four inch now, six inch high pressure line. We are tracking and maintaining all of the applications that come into, to our company so that we can provide you all, all of the stakeholders, as well as the customers, kind of this ongoing cadence of communication around where those projects stand and how our, our progress is impacting those. So there will be a lot of communication coming from us. And we are committed to providing the resources from our company and leveraging all of those available resources in order to compress schedules and timelines in any way that we possibly can. Next slide, please, Ife. So then really where, where we are now and our next steps is, is we're working with development partners on how we can execute an agreement for land use as we move forward with that peach route that I had discussed earlier. Really working with the Town of Winter Park for the CNG permitting and what those requirements might look like, and of course, working with you all as to any requirements that may be necessary for that temporary compressor station. We are also at the same time in parallel, working with the US Forest Service to obtain those appropriate permits that we will need. And in the meantime, we've offered and, and I think is a good opportunity to have a, an open house in person, the Town of Winter Park has agreed to host it for all of our developers to come in so that they can really have an individual discussion with Peter Schmidt and his team around where exactly they are and again, kind of those one-off case by case scenarios about what we can do with them to, to move their projects forward in a timely manner. So this is really where we are right now, kind of our next steps and, and steps into the future toward that solution that we had, that I had mentioned earlier of getting that six inch line in there. And with that, I, I speak fast kind of intentionally so that we can leave time to answer the questions that I'm sure that you have. And so I will, I will turn the floor over to you all to, to ask those questions of us.
Well, this was brought up, I want to say five or 10 years ago, that there was going to be a gas problem in Grand County, there wouldn't be enough gas. So this last year, we watched you guys put in, I don't know, three miles, five miles of high pressured line. And that wasn't to help with the issue?
Are you talking?
Can you repeat your question?
North of Tabernacle?
It wasn't a question, it was a statement. You guys ran lines from Frazier through Tabernacle, high pressure lines, I want to say they're four or six inches up into almost Granby, I guess, and then this was brought up, this issue of gas was brought up last 10 years and then five years ago. That Grand County was not going to have enough gas service, so I don't know how you didn't know not to plan for it.
So I can respond to the comment around the gas reinforcement that was installed, this is Steve Marks with Excel Energy. So you're correct, this system's all interconnected. This line actually runs back towards Frazier, or sorry, runs from Grand Lake to Granby and then proceeds south towards Frazier, Winter Park, and it's actually fed from another gas supply stream from Denver. You're accurate, we did do a high pressure reinforcement Alaska, over the last couple of years, and that did provide additional gas service to Granby and Grand Lake area, and now in this next phase of reinforcement, we're fortifying and bolstering the pressure and the gas supply to Frazier and Winter Park. Unfortunately, I can't speak to the comment around concerns around running out of gas 10 years ago. I don't have any insight into, into that comment. Peter, if, if you do, you're, you're more than welcome to comment. That, that's not a comment I'm aware that Excel has made around a lack of gas supply 10 years ago.
Oh, we're, I don't have. Sorry, we were at a county meeting with the, most of the builders and they were all talking about the gas issue. And there was somebody from Excel there that said, yes, there is a gas issue of service.
Okay, so, so how do we, how can the Town of Frazier facilitate helping move this forward rather than looking back, because I mean, obviously, wherever the breakdown happened, it happened and now we, all we can do now is move forward, we can't go back in time and, and.
Well, if we had more than one service provider, Philip, that would help.
I know, I know, well, Mountain Parks Electric is certainly in our audience, so. So how, how, how does the Town of Frazier help Excel Energy do their job and service our development?
Thank you for, for the question. You know, what, what we would look to you all is to really help us get information out there so that we can really communicate with the community at the best of our ability, and I think your assistance would be really appreciated and welcome, so thank you. I also think that when it comes to the point of needing to do that temporary compressor station that we can work closely and I believe that we have members of our team that are already working with your team in order to get the necessary permits for that. And as far as that's concerned, I think those are the two main pieces. And then possibly providing some additional support as we move forward with US Forest Service permitting so that they know that we really all, all see this project as, as an important project that we can work together to expedite through their, through their permitting process.
So the compressor station, do you have a tentative location for that?
Right now, we're looking at a location that's kind of right near the Safeway in town, we've got some land, I understand that Excel Energy owns right up there that we. We've got some land, I understand that Excel Energy owns right up there that we can be able to use for this.
Does that create a s- a possible serious safety issue for the town to have that that many tanks under pressure within an urban area or not?
So there are two separate pieces, the the compressor station is kind of the the one that looked like a back end of a of a semi trailer. Um and that would be the only piece that would be or the only piece of equipment that would be in the town of Frazier. The CNG trucks would be uh down in the south part of Winter Park and we will be working with them. And we've discussed and and spoken with the fire chief around all of the necessary safety precautions that we would need to take. That truck or similar truck has been in place in that area in past years, so they're very well uh well-versed and prepared to it to provide all of the public safety checks that we would need for that vehicle or vehicles.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Has our team seen the location of this compressor station or? Okay, um Safeway is just, I mean, just so you know, I mean, it's right in the middle of everything. We've got condominiums right above it, how much noise is involved with this compressor?
Yeah, that's a good question. Um we are working to be sure that we fall within the noise ordinances that you have, um which I believe to be between fifty-five and sixty-five decibels at the property boundary. And so that is, that's the metric that we've been looking at.
Anybody have any expertise in noise, how loud is that?
Anything with a decibel sounds pretty loud.
Because we we don't, we don't have any noise ordinances, as I know.
No, no, I don't think we do either.
Just.
And I don't think from a staff's perspective, we've seen any plans to date on onsite or or specifics.
Yes, we're, this is Steve Martz again from Excel, just add context, we're looking at a few different options um of where we could cite that temporary compressor. Obviously, what we have uh first in mind is safety. Obviously, we want to minimize, you know, that being any sort of impact to the community. Um you know, example of which, you know, would be something the effect of, you know, we wouldn't want to cite that next to uh Highway forty, you know, and have the potential for vehicular impact or anything like that. Um our second concern would be, like Kelly indicated, right, reducing noise. So we we have heard of city ordinances um for some locations further south in the town of Winter Park, as well as further north of Frazier. So we're trying to reconcile all that and identify um, you know, the best position to cite that compressor um where it's it's the safest and has the lowest impact to the community.
I just, I mean, just so you know, Safeway is a huge part of our town income, if anything, we're to compromise that store, obviously. But the the other, the other thing, question I have is you guys have quite a facility up on County Road fifty, um just just to the uh north and west of Frazier. Um which is a lot more, you know, at least doesn't have residential around it by the pole yard. So anyway, so yeah, just work closely with our town staff. I mean, Safeway just is kind of scary, it's right in the middle of really, really heavily utilized infrastructure, so and a lot of residential use too. And and again, we don't have any noise ordinance, so that's not reassuring that you're living with our noise ordinance, because we don't have any, so.
We have to have some noise ordinance.
Yeah, yeah, we should, but it's something we need to look at, obviously.
We we have to have something because they made the plow shut down from scraping the roads.
They had to do with chip seal, okay, they didn't have to do with noise ordinances, but.
No, that was, that was the no- noise ordinance.
Yeah, we have ours.
Yeah.
I mean, the uh, you see the, I mean, if you go down on the the front range where they're fracking, they have these massive enclosures around that might help with. It's a eyesore, but huge gas tank in the middle of our community is not not beautiful either.
Well, it's better than not having gas.
Yeah, no, I agree.
Uh what's a timeframe on that, like, how long is it gonna take? What's your guesstimate? When you can start fulfilling all the contracts and new clients?
Sure, so what we're, what we're hopeful of is that this will be uh resolved at the end of twenty twenty-two. And that is what we're, that is what we're really hoping for, I'm sorry.
That's a long time.
Now, it's a big tall pipe, they've got, and they have to work with the Forest Service, so that might be optimistic.
As a follow-up, as if I can, as a follow-up question, with without an expedited permit system uh in place. Uh what would be the typical timelines for for getting the permits for the Forest Service, the construction, uh you, the design, the engineering and so forth like that? I mean, twenty twenty-one sounds pretty ambitious.
Oh, I said twenty twenty-two.
I I missed, oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah, and and that is assuming that we're able to get some expedited uh permitting. We will be in communication if any of that changes and pushes our timeline back further. Um but we're 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 really trying hard to to keep it on that schedule.
So is there no new, no new contracts will be signed until then? Or is this sub, this little substation, say, gonna like help with the people you already have under contract? Or do you have people under contract that are not gonna get service now?
Peter, can you take that one?
Yes.
And and let me just ask, is my audio coming through fine?
It's, yes.
Yeah.
It is.
Fantastic, and so again, I just introduce introduce myself, I'm the senior manager for the design organization of the Mountain Division. Um and so under direct purview, I have all uh design applications and eventual construction that goes through for the Mountain Division. To the point that was made early about, and I'll say, new customers and in-flight, uh to those that have been put on a contract, we have made a commitment to those ser- customers to serve them. Um that is actually going to be construction that you'll continue to see throughout twenty twenty-one. Um and potentially based on the timelines of the customers themselves and their own infrastructure build-out where they're, you know, building the foundations and backfilling. It could even be to say we have construction that's occurring later, even though we still have this moratorium in place. So it's definitely um un- unfortunately a restriction to the newer applications that that come in, those that's uh haven't um reached a point where we're able to commit to them. Um based on, again, the partnership between the two and building out what was understood to be the need. Um that's, and then the future, um as Kelly mentioned, those that we haven't yet seen are the going to be the ones that we'll have to work with. Uh more on a pre-design, you know, scope, running line, understanding the the build-out that we can then support as we step out of the moratorium.
Okay, so you're saying everyone under contract right now, if he's gonna have, gonna be able to get gas through Excel?
Yes.
That's good to know.
Which we did, they did, we did have one developer that's been denied. For, yeah.
I think there's two or three that have been denied so far.
The moratorium, so it 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 is affecting the town of Frazier.
I- i- if I may, yes, um I'll go ahead and offer that we are, I'm already beginning to track, of course, those applications that have come in. I have um guidance given out to my own designers, my own staff, for how we will be tracking um each of those applications that we have to put a hold on, you know, persistent and uh continuous communication. Uh with those customers to let them understand, again, where we're at as a company, where we're at, looking to feed them. Um and really what's gonna be key from a design perspective and my ability to serve them is going to be as we start to step out of the moratorium. So it'll be crucial that uh we are able to have those designs um well-thought-outs, complete. And able to move forward with um extra, I'll say, extra construction assets so that the moments uh we are able to move forward, we can get everything taken care of and, I mean, to be blunt, give. So much needed um care and treatment to the customers that would have been on hold for so long.
So timing-wise, how did this work? I mean, from the point that you declared, the point you announced this, to the point you declared a moratorium, was that one of the same, did that happen at the same time or? Were were we given any notice that this was gonna happen?
I I I have to offer that there wasn't a considerable amount of notice um back in the beginning of May is when I began to work with Steve and his team. Uh specifically on the concerns of our high-pressure system to whether or not I could feed on the distribution side. Uh so about early May, May tenth, to be precise, is when I put my own designers on notice that we were to hold on any further approvals. And then on uh a Monday of last week, that would have been the seventh, I believe, is when uh we had to, w- we moved forward with the official communication. Um that uh the the concerns were real and that we do in order to ensure that we are able to serve our current customers and those already agree to, um we would have to put a hold on any future.
So this makes me really glad that the last, I'm a contractor and the last house I built was all electric and the next one I'm building is all electric. And the next twenty units that I'm building will be all electric too. So I'm glad that myself and the owners made that decision, so, because that's not much notice. I mean, honestly, you're designing houses, you're designing projects, if there'd been some kind of notice, people could have had a little better way to plan. So anyway, it's a, this is a tough one, you put everybody in.
Certainly understood.
So Mayor, I have a question as well, so um it's my understanding, perhaps I'm incorrect, that we've been at the ninety-five percent uh capacity level for at least a couple of years here. Um and that your model, that the model that you've been using, um according to you, did not take into account growth. And there has certainly been a lot of growth here. I think my question for you is, um I understand you have a a process you're working through to correct the deficiency. But what are you doing to your model and the assumptions that are built into that and how you manage that moving forward? Because what we don't want to do is wind up here, because, I mean, you know, nobody has a crystal ball in the economy, but the growth in the valley is gonna be robust. So how do we avoid this? What are you doing behind the scenes to challenge either people who manage the model or the assumptions that are in the model uh to prevent us getting here in the future?
I'll give you a a a general answer and then I'm gonna turn it over to Steve to give you a more uh a more precise answer. But what I can tell you, the behind the scenes, what we're doing is we're working really closely with the the folks that do a lot of modeling to really share what we're seeing in the field. And what we're seeing forecast out as we look at community master plans, we talk to our development partners and we get a better understanding of what their projects are so that we can relay that information back. And so that's kind of at a, at a really general level, but I'd like Steve to be able to kind of provide a little more branding and detail for you.
Sure, I'm I'm happy to, this is Steve Martz with Excel Energy again. Um so you're exactly right, we, you know, we're certainly using this as a, as an opportunity to challenge our assumptions, our assumptions, um what gets fed into the model, if you will. Um, you know, it's certainly a very dynamic system, you know, we're looking at all of our systems across the state um several times a year and basically continuously, right? And so what we're always trying to balance is uh building out infrastructure to meet demand. And, you know, in certain areas, you know, we see a range of of growth from very low to to none, frankly, to extraordinarily high. And obviously, you know, I would categorize many of the mountain resort communities in that extraordinarily high category, which is obviously fantastic for you all. And so, you know, the paradigm that we're revisiting is, is the growth that we're loading into the system sufficient? Um we have forecast models, um we did identify a need for reinforcement on these lines um a couple of years ago. And what we did not s- see or identify is is the extraordinary growth that you all have had. And so we're really using um the requests that we're getting in currently, all of the information that we're getting from the developers. Um all the master plans to really look hard at what all of our future plans are and um provide, you know, just a little assurance, not just to ourselves, but to the community. That, you know, this, this will never be a problem again, right? That's obviously the goal, so um understand that, you know, that only goes so much, you know, this issue is here today and obviously that doesn't fix that. And I'm highly empathetic to that, but those are the things, you know, behind the scenes that we're changing on our model, uh how we're using this as an opportunity to to really improve that. And like Kelly said, just to, you know, buy extra insurance, as one might say, you know, even the existing plan that we have to install six inch, we're looking at how we can upsize that further. Um, you know, and and really ensure that this is no longer problematic uh going into the future.
How much of Winter Park's development is being um affected by this with their new Rome project and all, all that stuff being built out in that area?
Uh that's all been impacted by by this as well. Uh so Winter Park, almost the entirety of Winter Park, downtown Winter Park, Rome development, all all of those developments are impacted by this currently.
Are they under contract?
Peter, is Rome under contract?
There is a segment, so, and and my terminology may be off by what's being used by perhaps the town or the community. But the phase one, it was as it was presented to to Frazier, I apologize, the phase one is was presented to Excel Energy. Um did receive approval, last year, we started building out the distribution and those subsequent homes are going to get built out here. Um now I will offer that the capacities that they had offered on the original onset of that project, we will be holding them too. So again, um just imagine if the single-family home uh that size for, I'll say, a standard residential, if I was to double unload, that's not something that we could consider at this time. It would still be constrained within the uh really the project management that they had offered upfront. So that is, again, this is this phase one limited, go ahead.
No, I'm just like, so there, so all the people that are under contract are not gonna be serviced, is what you're saying?
No.
All the people that are building may not get gas, that is correct.
Phase one is under contract, so they'll get it, but if they go to expand beyond what that agreement was for initially, then.
That that is correct.
Microphone, please.
Um, so how long have we been at ninety-five percent? Capacity for Frazier?
Uh generally speaking, uh we've been um nearing that level of capacity for several years. Um again, when we do our demand modeling and evaluation of the system, uh we do evaluate growth coming out of the system. And so we have had in the past excess capacity that we've been able to offer um to the community as it's grown. And so we've basically pushed up against our margin and that's what's triggering this reinforcement.
And you guys didn't think to do this three years ago or four years ago or take a stab in the dark at what was gonna be developed based on the number of lots that were put into the area?
We're at the, we're going to the future, Parnell.
I'm I'm trying to get to the future, I'm trying to get them to understand.
Future's electric, Parnell.
Yeah, I guess so.
I I I would guess that uh whoever's responsible for this is no longer working at Excel.
Oh, I I doubt that.
I doubt it, yeah.
Okay, let's carry on.
So, okay, do we have any more constructive questions for Excel?
I do, is this a common problem, is this happening in other areas? Or are you guys looking to remedy that, other towns that are ninety-five percent now that since this has happened to us? Is that gonna, are you guys gonna try to prevent that in other fast-growing economies? Is this common?
We are going to do our best to prevent this in the future, but we're we're not a hundred percent certain that we won't see something similar in an in other parts.
Use tax, I mean, if there's, we've already had a development shutdown that.
Might have a couple.
Yeah.
I mean, I think a lot of our future planning as a town and what we're budgeting for has a lot to do with what the growth that we're assuming is gonna happen. And if that's not gonna happen, I mean, the big picture is is.
Well, if you weren't, if you weren't held hostage by one company that has a monopoly. I'm I'm talking gas.
What what I would offer, uh Madam Trustee, is that if if there is a development that is in the works that you anticipate coming on, a lot of these that we've talked about aren't anticipating the need for gas service until late into Q twenty-two. And so we do hope that you'll continue to work with us on projects that you have in the future so that we can work with them and work with you to to be able to see that through.
Okay.
Well, thank you for the update.
Further questions, anybody?
I would offer to you all the same offer that we made to to Winter Park, which is to provide you all with a really regular cadence of communication and an update on these projects that we have going on and where where they stand. As well as share information with you about that open house that we're gonna schedule with the development community so that you you're aware and that you can pass that on if if folks have questions. Uh or want more information about their specific developments, I would, we'll be very happy to get that information to you all as well.
And please give us plenty of notice on that compressor station, so we're, so we can have a robust discussion about where it goes.
Absolutely.
Hey, all right, thank you, that's all I had.
Okay, Mr. Mayor. Uh Todd Holsworth, East Grand Fire District, I'll just make sure that you guys uh realize we will certainly be watching and these tube trailers and, you know, potentially. Compressor station, which quite frankly, it's, it would be put at the uh reg station there at the uh Holiday Inn. I mean, that's, that's where the property is they're talking about, that's the only piece they have. So that's, I'm sure is, that's where it would end up being. There's a rake station there now, this would be a building next to it that feeds out and feeds back into it, basically is what it would look like. Um, can it be done? Yeah, I mean, it can be done with probably, you know, we'll we'll just keep an eye on it, I mean, we're gonna work with them, the tube trailers. Um Tabernash has had one regularly over the last about three years. Um, no issues with it, it's monitored, somebody babysits it essentially all night. Um, you know, the problem is they've got two smaller pipes running south from the County Road Eight all the way to the scary end. It just can't get the gas through it to the reg stations, that's.
Are you familiar with how loud those are, Todd, have you heard the compressor station or?
Well, it's it's basically. Well, it's, it's basically going to be, I think, electrically powered. Maybe it could be diesel powered, but they would have mufflers and things. So, you know, you can get all different grades of silencing on stuff.
It's right behind the hotel. I mean, that's, yeah.
Yeah. And when that reg station lets go, it gets noisy too. So.
Does this fit the, does this fit the plumbing out at the County Road Fifty site or?
So the County Road Fifty site feeds north. It does not have anything that comes back the other way.
Comes off the trunk line and feeds north.
Yeah. Yeah. It comes off the, the eight inches that goes, well, Churches Park to Corona. And unfortunately, that doesn't really help anything. And the west side of Frazier is not included because it's feeding from a reg station in the middle of the pole yard. So west of the railroad tracks is not on the map, for example. And part of Winter Park Ranch is not on it because it's feeding from a different regulator as well. But it's everything going from Ms. McCallum's house and Miller's house south. That's, that's all the way to the skier. And unfortunately, that line that that six inch they're going to come off of isn't really helping except down at the skier right now. So I just will say Dennis, myself, Ryan, our, our, we'll be certainly working with them and making sure that, you know, we're comfortable with what they're doing.
So is this compressor station any danger to Safeway or?
It, it actually would be closer to the best, or to the Holiday Inn than it would be safely.
Any danger to Holiday Inn?
I don't think so. I mean, there's a regulator station. They handle gas there right now.
The compressor is no more danger than that is.
Yeah, we don't see them around here. The, the closest compressor station we have is over by Williams Fork, by the mill. There's a large one there. As far as I know, there's never been any issues with that one.
I'm sure they're all, they're all over the country, I would imagine. And there's no track record of these.
Doesn't seem like that's where the problem. It's, it's backhoes and pipes that generally cause problems. It's not most anything else.
Type of infrastructure.
Yeah. Thank you. And feel free to call me or Dennis to, if you have any concerns or questions, then we'll, we've, we've been, and we'll be meeting with them to discuss the tube trailers and things.
So we, we need to probably contact somebody to put in a letter of let's expedite this or something.
Forest Service.
Actually, that's one of the concerns I have is the Forest Service resources to actually deal with permits. That's, that's, that's tough. I mean, you, we, everyone needs to contact certain like congressmen and senator types to say they need the resources to deal with permits because that's been an awkward, I think, Mountain Parks could chime in on permits getting through the Forest Service are not, not easy.
Anybody working with the Forest Service right now, that office has just been, got it. I mean, they need help down there.
I, that's a nice way to put it, I think. And it's not just the local office. It's up the line, I think. Yeah. That's where I think Forest Service needs help.
Speaking of resources, who's watching the trucks in Tabernash? Is that Excel's people or?
Generally, I've seen it's, so somebody hauls a trailer in and generally it's been some of the local techs that have been watching it, but I think they have contractors too. Yeah. And it's at the Boxwell's. I mean, that's where it's been sitting.
Okay, thank you.
You know, where, where it looks like they're running that line, there's another section of land that is the old Arrow Project. Why couldn't they run the trunk through the Arrow Project instead of through the National Forest? I would guess it'd be easier.
I think you need Steve on there for that.
Whatever expedites this is what.
They're also going to go whatever's cheapest for them.
Well, since the owner of Arrow is the owner of Rome, and he might want to build his houses with gas, he might help get this done faster.
Okay. Any other questions?
Good luck to you all.
I wouldn't be, I wouldn't want to be in your positions right now. So.
Thank you for that. I do want to just, in closing, thank you very much for your time. We, we understand that, that this is a very difficult subject for you. It's very difficult for us as well. So we, we appreciate the questions. Please keep them coming as you've got them. And I do commit to you that we will keep you updated as to the status of these projects. And definitely, as I heard you all say, we, we recognize the challenges with the Forest Service. So we'll keep you up to speed on how that all goes so that you're very well aware of everything that's going on. Thank you very much for your time and seeing you.
Anybody?
Thank you.
Yep, great, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's a bummer.
That was depressing.
I mean, buildings are economy. Like, what are they, what is going on? You know, it's crazy.
Can I ask Mountain Parks electric a question? Would you mind, would you mind taking a question? Yeah, jump up to the, I mean, what?
And identify.
Yeah, and identify yourself.
I'm Rob Taylor. I'm the manager of communications.
I mean, what's the difference in cost and putting in an electric versus natural gas?
I don't have those statistics in front of me.
So I can, can I? Working, what is it, Chris, right?
Chris is my counter.
Yes. So they, they get a, you guys have done some pretty robust experiments with air-to-air heat exchange systems, compressor type systems, and on a house out on the Four Bar Four Road, that's a modular, not but well insulated. There, half the house is heated with electric, with the air-to-air heat exchange, half is heated with propane, and you're meeting the propane threshold. And propane is not, I mean, it's probably twenty percent more than natural gas. So, so with, with tight homes and with all the technology we're doing now, and for instance, the house we're building right now up in Shadow Mountain Estates is about nine hundred square feet. It'll be all foam insulated. It'll have a heated slab with hot water. It'll have an electric boiler. It's an all-electric house. So, so I, I really think that, you know, I mean, we're seeing the reliability of this, this gas system. And San Francisco, other communities more progressive than ours, obviously, but they're having serious conversations and regulatory efforts at, at regulating out gas. Because if we really want to get to a sustainable future, it has to be electricity.
Yeah, I can speak, if you're talking about heating systems, I can speak to that. So I think what you're referring to is there's a low temperature air source heat pump. So traditionally, back in the day, you know, in the seventies or whatever, you know, electric heat as, as electric prices rose became a lot more expensive than gas heat. Gas is still a little less expensive to heat a home with. But there have been a lot of improvements in recent years with heat pumps in particular that use refrigeration technology. And so we have seen the homes you're talking about, we put in, in a pilot, three of these at low temperature air source heat pumps and propane heated homes. And, and to offset some of the propane load and see if there was a cost savings. And there was. And it was about a ten to twelve year payback, if I remember right, for one of those three homes that used it probably most efficiently. But we're seeing a lot of, or more of these air source heat pumps being installed, I think at River Run and Granby. They have thirty units or something like that with these heat pumps that are the sole heating source in the home. So if it's a new home, very well insulated, this is a pretty efficient, cost-effective way to do it. And granted, it's still not, you know, as low as natural gas, but it's not as high as it used to be. And, and I believe it is better than propane. I, I know it is. So as far as cost effectiveness. The other thing I think I want to assure you of is, I mean, I was sorry to hear of the capacity constraint that XL has and the hardship it's put on your community. But I want to assure you that our Metler substation that serves Winter Park and Frazier, we have a lot of capacity. So if you look at building new electric homes, we don't foresee having a problem serving that if you go that direction.
And you guys are expanding the size of the PV system out on County Road Five, right?
I don't know the answer to that.
Yeah, but the substation there, I think you're looking at property across the street from there. So across five for more, more panels. So that, that whole.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. It's been a long day.
Yeah, that's all right.
You're talking about our solar array.
Yes.
The one up near the.
The substation there on.
Yeah. I don't think we're looking at something right there, but I could be mistaken. I know we're looking at something else in a community solar array, and I don't know the exact location of that. But we're looking at doing more with renewables, yes.
There are, there are alternatives.
I built the house. Time flies, but twenty, twenty-one years ago on top of Gore Pass. And I used all electric. And back, back then, I, I don't know if you still do it, but it was a on-peak, off-peak demand system at Bricks. So it heated up the bricks and then it radiate, radiate off.
We, we don't.
I, I know. This was a three, this was a, like a thirty-five hundred square foot house. So this was.
Gotcha. We don't actually install those anymore. We did at a certain time to fill our, kind of our valley center electric load. And we fill them completely, but we still have an on-peak, off-peak rate. I think it's seven cents per hour off-peak for nineteen hours a day. And then twenty-one cents for five hours a day during our peak hours, and then all day Sundays off-peak.
I'm just reassuring people, like, up here, you can still heat your house.
Well, and the other thing, we were talking about heat pumps. If I could mention one more thing, we do have, I think, the most generous, or one of the most, if not the most generous heat pump rebates in the state. It's up to a thousand dollars a ton. So that's some pretty significant money. So.
A thousand dollars, what?
Per ton. These electric heating systems are, you, you size them in a tonnage based on the size of the house. And so you might see a typical utility in the three to five hundred dollar range per ton. Ours is a thousand on the air source heat pumps. So.
And they double those air conditioners.
They do, yes. Which.
Who would have thought? Yeah.
Right.
I always told customers, they asked me about an air conditioner, I said, just more windows and open them up.
Okay, okay, we're digressing. We still have Paul.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, Rob.
Thank you.
Okay, Paul, you are up.
All right. Well, that was interesting to sit through, actually. The no gas and icebox of the nation, that's not good. I think most of you know me. My name's Paul Bacchus. I'm a CPA. And I'm with a firm called McMahon Associates, and we audit, I don't know, thirty or forty municipalities, pretty much all a cast. We're really kind of a specific focused firm. We don't do any individual income taxes. And I'm pleased to be here tonight, at least virtually, and walk you through the financial statements. So I'm gonna be brief and kind of try and open up some time for questions. But let me make sure that I can share the right screen here. So can you actually see my cursor moving now?
Yeah, there it is.
Okay. So this is our audit software, and I'll just kind of briefly walk you through the, what we do. So we have planning, fieldwork, and reporting. And planning pretty much consists of understanding the internal controls, reviewing the minutes, ordinances, things like that. So when we go through your internal controls, we're looking at how our items paid, how is the building department process transactions, water permits, credit cards.
Yes, your screen, I'm sorry. Share it. It's not, it's not.
It's not live? Let's see. Let me hit stop and try and share one more time here. There we go.
There it is.
So these are all kind of the departments we look at, how our journalatories made, how's payroll processed. And so in each, this is a write-up on kind of how, how items are processed. I actually read all your minutes throughout the year, so I feel like I've been kind of sitting in the meetings, even if you haven't seen me. Then we, we've pulled all your data in and we start verifying it. So as an example, if, if you have cash and investment, say, we could send, call a trust, a bank confirmation, and we could say, how much do you have in the bank account? And they would send us back dollar amounts. And the goal is to make sure that if you have X dollars in, on your financial statements, we know it's in the bank. And you can see each of these as a work paper. This is done by Austin and reviewed by someone else. We always, even though you hear from me, we always have at least one consistent person on your engagement and one new person on your engagement. We'll go through and we want to make sure you followed your investment policies, that we've met state statutes. Everything's covered by FDIC or Public Deposit Protection Act. We'll go through all the receivables, both government and utility billing, and make sure that anyone that owed money to the town was actually being billed, were collecting it, whether it's, you know, taxes or any other funds. You can see we have Comcast franchise in here. And I'm a little curious if your franchise agreement with Excel addressed any of that previous conversation. But we want to make sure that money that's owed to the town gets deposited timely and credited to the correct account. We'll go through capital assets. Is it insured? Is it capitalized, depreciated, tracked? Same thing with accounts payable. If you're making a payment, it needs to be budgeted for, paid timely. We don't want to see interest, late fees, things like that. And it needs to be coded to the correct account so that we know, when we look at your financials, we know a payroll account is payroll and repair and maintenance is repair and maintenance. We go through all your payroll documents. So here's kind of your employee handbooks. And we'll, we'll reconcile what you show on your financial statements back to your payroll tax forms. So we know that they were all being reported correctly. There's your nine quarterly nine forty-ones. And we want to make sure all that's handled appropriately. You guys really don't have much left for dead anymore. But when you have, most municipalities have, and you have in the past, either COPs or, or bonds. We want to make sure we've complied with all those requirements. Do we have the correct equity amount? Did we start this year with where we ended last year? And then there's a fair amount of other stuff like legal compliance as far as statutes, and then grant compliance and things like that. And the goal is to produce audited financial statements. And so they were, a draft was in your packet, and one, hopefully, once you approve it tonight, then we'll take the draft off and we'll start filing with everybody that needs to have it. The financial statements, which you should be able to see on your screen now, the independent auditor's report. That's our report that says the financial statements are accurate and they can be used by the parties that need to, to make decisions on town finances. So the actual audited financial statements unfortunately are seventy-one pages long. And that's because it's not just for you as council. It's going to go to the SEC, the federal government, the state government, the Colorado State Auditor, all your granting agencies, insurance company, banking relationships. So that it kind of grows. As an example, the actual last page in here is the highway users report. So the state wants to make sure that the numbers that we provide them are audited, or you provide them are audited. So we actually have to audit your highway user reports so that is a condition of receiving your highway user funds.
I think you might need to actually share that document. If that's what you're actually going through right now, we can't see that. We can only see your, your software screen.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I, you know, I always struggle with Zoom when you share the screen. It tends to not want to change screens when you have multiple ones. Is this the financials here? Okay, so I was just, and thank you for letting me know that. I was just showing it seventy-one pages. Here's kind of the local highway user report. But that's why it's kind of so long is because there's so many different documents in here and, and items in here for all these different parties. But the actual independent auditor's report would be referred to as an unmodified opinion or a clean audit opinion. Means you can rely on those financial statements. There's the management discussion and analysis, which we kind of assist Beth with that, but it's really a document that has certain items that have to be in here. That's prepared by Beth, has some charts and graphs and things like that. But I'm going to jump just a kind of one page or two pages, I guess, that I think are worthwhile for every council to know. So this is a, a income statement for your governmental funds. So we have general fund, debt service, conservation trust, capital equipment, unrestricted revenues. And you can see the revenue is coming in. We had five point eight coming into the general fund, six point eight across all your funds. And then we have expenses going out. There's obviously a lot more detail in the back. But you get, take the revenues, subtract the expenses, adjust for the transfers, and you get to this line here. Excess deficiency of revenues over expenses. And that's essentially how much did you add or decrease your bank account or your fund balance for the year? So the general fund started at four point six million. You actually added one point eight million, almost one point nine million to your fund balances during the year. When COVID started, you know, everyone was in full-on panic. You know, I'm sure you guys were redoing your budget and your projections. But what's kind of interesting is almost every municipality, we. But what's kind of interesting is almost every municipality we audit is up with the rare exception of direct tourist towns like the Aspens, Winter Parks, Vales, Crested Buttes. So if you have, if you have a ski lift in your town, you maybe weren't up, but you weren't down as bad as as anticipated. Most other municipalities went up. A lot of that is because of the South Dakota versus Wayfair sales tax decision where you tend to collect online sales tax and you haven't in the past. But long, long story long, you had a really good year financially, at least your general fund adding one point eight million. You started the year with four point six, so you ended the year with six point five million. That's what rolls into twenty twenty-one and can be used. Just as a kind of guideline, you can see you spent four million dollars last year. You have a fund balance of six point five. That's a healthy, reasonable fund balance for you to have. The capital equipment, that kind of floats up and down, but that was really your only governmental fund that had a decrease. You do have your two proprietary funds. Water and wastewater. Water fund had net income of a hundred and twenty-six thousand. This is a little different presentation. It's more smart like a business, but you'll see at a hundred and twenty-six thousand in net income, but that included three hundred and ninety-six thousand of depreciation expense, which is non-cash. And the wastewater had a little decline of a hundred and forty-one thousand, but that included four hundred and forty-six thousand in depreciation. If you kind of wanted to look at the cash flows, you'd see that the water fund actually had an increase in in available cash. Wastewater had a decrease, but keep in mind wastewater had that big phosphorus. All those phosphorus retrofit expenses, which were pretty substantial. You spent one point seven million out of the wastewater fund. It's harder for me to analyze water and wastewater funds because I I don't always know what regulatory requirements you're going to have coming up, but but both looked at least stable from an operating standpoint. The rest of the financial statements, you know, there's lots of information in here, but honestly, I won't spend a lot of time going through it unless you had some questions. There's things like the Tabor, your Tabor ballot question. Where's your money held? It's mostly call a trust. You had fifteen million with call trust. That's a very stable investment and and we know you're going to get your money back on that. It's held in in governmental, US government funds. What happened with fixed assets? You'll see that. And then after that is kind of various agreements. You can see we have, you know, Grand Park tax abatements and things like that. But the rest is budget actual statements. The budget actual statements really are pretty consistent with what I would think you would anticipate would have happened. So with that said, that's the financial statements. I do have a letter that I'll I'll go through, but I just wanted to provide an opportunity to answer any questions you have on the financial statements. You know, I didn't, I guess I didn't show you on the audited the audit software, but I guess I will just show you this because I always think it's worth knowing. I just, I always want to make sure that you guys know. So you should be able to see there's four hundred and twenty-nine different work papers that have been scanned in to our software. Just trying to verify that the numbers are accurate, they're correct, the taxpayers' money has been held, used appropriately. The numbers are presented appropriately. So you as council, you know, I want you to have some comfort that there there's been a lot of work done behind the scenes, making sure those numbers are correct. And we don't just, you know, kind of slap an opinion out there. Any questions on financial statements? And then I'll run through the letter and and get out of your hair. All right, crickets. So I will just put up, share this audit letter. So this is a required governing board letter and it has certain things that we have to communicate. Sometimes you, it starts off this qualitative aspects of accounting policies, which in nerd herd language is what what big estimates do we have in there? So sometimes we have hard-to-estimate items like an environmental liability or a legal liability. You don't really have any of those. It's how long your asset's going to last and are we going to collect all our accounts receivable? Well, you depreciate your assets over standard life, so I wouldn't recommend anything different. And we assume you're going to collect all your receivables. It's it's nice when you can turn off the water or the water if people don't pay, so you tend to collect everything. Difficulties in counterperforming the audit, there really weren't any. Beth and your finance staff does a great job. They have reconciliations ready to go. They have pretty much backup for any transactions we ask for and we kind of the old model of auditing was randomly sampling stuff. We actually pull all your data and we risk-weight each transaction. And when we go, hey, we need a credit cards charge from you know, Saturday night at two AM and it's a unusual vendor code, they have the backup and it always makes sense. That was, I'm not sure, I can't remember if it was here or Winter Park, but Hilli's Hooker Service popped up and we're like, yeah, I think we got to see that charge. But it was, I thought that was a towing service.
It's been around a long time. You must have seen that before.
Yeah, that one now, but that was kind of.
They get a lot of great phone calls on that overnight.
Yeah, you know, really the journal entries you made are very kind of common, not anything unusual. And that makes us feel good because it tells me that the information you get from your finance team is accurate and you can rely on it. No disagreements with management. The only two things that I would bring to your attention is there is a new accounting standard on on leases. If you have leases now, they'll have to be accounted for similar to going to the bank and and taking out a loan. There's not, from an accounting standpoint, they want, they view leases as debt. And the same thing if you're the lessor and you're leasing, say, property to someone, we would book that entire amount as a receivable and then record the revenue over the term of the lease. So all leases are going to be on the balance sheet going forward. But at counties, that's kind of a big project at at municipalities. It's not quite as bad. And we have had just huge problems with, I've had multiple governments that have had cybersecurity claims. And I, you know, I sent out to Beth and and your team a letter during the year of, hey, beware of any wire transfers going out. We need a callback provision. We want to make sure you're calling back if you have any wires going out because we've had wires and cybersecurity claims all year long. And so I think it is worthwhile changing your network policy to require a mandatory password change at least every six months and to require a certain complexity on those passwords. And I think the wires, you know, I I'm confident that your staff has that under control, but those are kind of two areas that we've really seen problems with that at a variety of clients. So those are two things I'd bring to your attention, but overall, I think it was a really clean audit and that allows you to focus on all the other things that come across your desk, so.
Great, thanks, Paul. Any trustees have any questions, comments?
Well, just a comment. So in the real estate community, Paul, just so you know, they recommended that you only send wires on Tuesday, Wednesday and Thursday. Most wire fraud happens on Fridays, Mondays.
Yeah, you know, a lot of the new software is kind of interesting that you can tell it's a problem because they they have started adding vendor portals. So if the vendor wants to be paid from the municipality, they would have to log in and actively control where the money is sent, how it's sent. And it kind of eliminates the responsibility from the town, but that's a, that's also a very good point. Once it hits the weekend, it's much harder to recover.
Get you with your real estate insider tips. Any other questions? Motion?
I'd move to approve the twenty twenty audit. With the notations in the notations as to numbers and everything are in the agenda. You need other numbers with that or?
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
opposed? Thanks, Paul.
Thank you. You know, we appreciate your trust and we don't take it lightly. And if you ever have a bad audit, you'll get it straight from us, but this year was all good. So congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Kudos to our staff.
All right, take care.
Okay, open forum?
Um.
Your updates.
No, I mean open forum. In in the minutes for the last meeting, it said the discussion for grand kids and KFFR would be continued at this meeting.
I'll speak to that. We ended up pulling that off because we felt the Excel update was very vital that the board discussed that at this meeting. And we weren't sure how long that would take for that discussion, but we'll be bringing that back to the next meeting.
Okay.
We do have, in in the interim time, we have collected additional information on the American, American Recovery Act. And we think we're going to set that up. In talking to Ed, we're going to set that up for a broader discussion because you're going to get two tranches of money. You're going to get some money this year and then some potential either money late this year or first part of next year, correct, Beth? Yeah, in a year. So I think there's going to be a broader policy discussion about what to do with the fund. And then right behind that, you'll have the ability to consider the two grant requests that you have. But we're going to put it as as one item, even though there's, the first piece will be a broad discussion about what you're going to give this additional funds, what it could be used for, and then you'll be able to potentially consider grant requests.
Great, thank you. And that, the other thing, and we're still a housing authority, I know, and this isn't a housing authority meeting. But has there any, anything been done about a regional housing authority? Being formed?
So, Ed, you can cut me off anytime. We're having a good discussion. We're actually going to be meeting with Keith Resper, the the manager there in Winter Park tomorrow. And I do think there is some interest in at least pursuing some conversation. I don't know where that goes at this point. I'll leave it to my colleague here to pick up the ball and run with that, but at least we will begin to engage on Winter Park on that matter to see what if any interest in here.
Will Sheena be part of that?
No, ma'am. This is just a meeting between the three managers. We're going to go through a whole bucket list of stuff and we'll just be starting kind of kicking off that conversation.
Three? You mean the two of you and Keith?
Yes.
Okay.
The one going out soon, the one you already have is going to be here for a long time and then Winter Park. Yes, ma'am. So the three of us. And so, I mean, I prefer to add, but I'm sure he'll keep you in the loop as as to where those conversations go.
Kicking off this conversation.
You got to turn your mic on.
Keep forgetting. We're just kicking off this conversation and the regional housing authority, we just want to explore that idea. We've got a couple of other ideas and discussions that we want to talk about, especially in light of the the Excel moratorium. We want to see if there's ways that maybe we can work together so that we can get effective planning in place and you know, with with all the the developments on the line right now, you know, we can make predictions about what the growth is going to look like, at least between our two communities. If we can be able to communicate that to Excel, maybe they have a, they can factor that into their equation about what size infrastructure to put in.
So since we're on open forum, are you done?
Forums for the public.
Well, there's nobody talking.
Well, we haven't passed the public. There's people.
We do have. Yeah, we.
So, so.
So are you speaking as the public or are you speaking as?
A trustee.
So do we have any open forum? Right, if you would like to make a public comment, please raise your hand. Use the raise your hand feature in Zoom. If you would like to provide a public comment. And depending on your platform, you should see a hand you can click on or if you select more at the bottom or next to your name, you should be able to slightly raise hand. And I will introduce you for public comment.
Such a lively group. Todd's coming up.
Just, Todd, again, we did go to stage one, fire restrictions at noon today. So if anybody has any questions on that, it's being put out there pretty good. There's some nice information sheets. You can download them or plaster them or look at them on, I think it's probably all over Facebook by now. So if you have any questions, it's pretty much the normal stage one. It did include incendiary devices and explosives, so maybe the West End five will be a little quieter for a bit, but.
Why, why, why not be more strict?
At this point, the consensus in in virtually all Northwest Colorado did go to stage one. And we're in a little bit better shape than some of those. So at this point, the check-offs are just not there. Will it be next week? It's very possible next week it might go to stage two.
And who makes that decision?
So it's a group decision with the sheriff for the county leading things with his fire management officer. Fire districts basically chiming in with what we think things are. Because it's, Kremling's obviously different than the East End and Grand Lakes different than, you know, the center, so. But everyone agreed that it was good to go at this point.
We have historically high temperatures right now?
Yeah, it it really changed fast because we weren't thinking it would go to stage one this week.
So let's not have a fire and then go to the next stage?
That's not the intent, absolutely not, yeah.
So if it goes to stage two on the flashing signs that all of our guests see that have no idea what it means and probably aren't going to look it up. Can they say stage two, fire ban? Violations in small print, thousand-dollar fine. Didn't they increase the fines for?
I'm not sure the county's got that all up, but that is, they're pretty much increasing the fines quite a bit.
Okay.
And I believe the the latest one references those because I think they're, they're either almost adopted or very close. And it's, it's a much more significant fine.
Okay, I guess the word is, I mean, getting the word out on those electronic signs to tell, put people on notice that.
Yeah, and and we do tend to use the word ban. The forest likes to use the word restrictions.
I like ban.
Yeah, ban.
Clear.
Kind of understand ban better than restrictions.
Yeah.
So, so that's the dispersed stuff and all brought up, you know, it's off, they're not, shouldn't have fires in the forest, except at established campgrounds. And phase two would make that go away. The problem being is is patrolling that, of course.
And a steel fire ring, right? I mean, the only fires we can have under stage one are in a.
So so stage one would be established fire rings in campgrounds or a private home. Yeah.
Yeah.
And not to spurs camping, which is where most of our concern is, so.
Thanks. Okay, it looks like nobody else has raised their hand. So updates? Oh, Andy.
I, I could, I'll finish my list then. Just wondering when we're going to hear from our conservation easement attorney next.
So mayor and board, Ed and I have a meeting with her Friday morning. She's going to do a debrief on that point. We were also waiting for a thirty-day notice period to to kind of expire. So now that we are either at that point or slightly past that point, once Ed gets the debrief, I would expect that he will be huddling with you pretty quick. I did my best to try to have an exec session tonight, but the mayor waved me off as my last meeting request. He said, no, you cannot have, no, he didn't. All kidding aside, all kidding aside, I thought you made me. You did say that, yes, sir. So but but we were, so we were kind of in this holding pattern until that thirty-day notice happened. This will also give us a chance to get Ed up a speed in a very detailed conversation on Friday. I would expect in the very near future, you'll be huddled together, looking at what steps, if any, that you want to take at that point.
I'm done.
Yeah, I'm a little disappointed that we are not going to be able to get into the restroom project at the, at the park. are not going to be able to get into the restroom project at the at the park. I mean, that that money did come forward last summer, and I understand Russell had a hard time finding contractors, but we talked a little bit more about the possibility of other things happening over at the park this summer. There's a tremendous amount of construction going on. And one piece of infrastructure over there really could be very low cost, and that's the sledding hill with an amphitheater. And the idea there is it'd be a small raised hill um with a with uh using rock and and film material and then a on one side of facing north likely would be the sledding hill and facing south would be a small amphitheater. And um some things like that, and we did go out the other day and began to really look hard at where the where the east side trail is going to be will be Mary Ann's Loop. Um, so I think there's some things the town could accomplish this summer. Um, and with a little bit more planning as to where locations are, we want to make sure this hill doesn't get built where the restrooms are going to be or where the infrastructure needs to go, but I I believe our plans are far enough along that hopefully we can do a few public things over there this summer to show that the the huge public effort that went into planning that area over there at least is starting to bear a little bit of fruit, so. So I'm hoping that can get move up on the agenda. That's all I have. Thank you.
Anybody else?
I just wanted to go around the table since Ed's going to be our new long-term um town manager here and go through what each trustee and the mayor think their top three issues for Fraser is.
I'm I'm open to that, but uh I have also been considering a work session, a future work session in July, where we can give you this with more details, because we don't know voting, etc. like it. Otherwise, you could have a list of priorities.
Well, wouldn't be prior. Is it just what, you know, like Katie, what do you think three biggest issues are? Fraser? Facing Fraser right now.
Um, housing, mental health and education.
Andy?
I'm looking forward to a work session. I've got a lot of, lot of, lot of important things all of us do, and I'm hoping that we uh we get some some real serious time together as a board. I think we're long past due. We've missed a retreats the last, when's the last retreat we've had? Remember, three years ago, at least four years ago, when Herb was still on the board, so. So I I'm really looking forward to Ed's Ed's work with us and uh all of us getting a chance to sit down one on one with Ed here over the next couple of weeks, I'm hoping. And um and I'm sorry, Parnell, I Yep, that's.
We'll wait six months before we have the next workshop, so.
No, we won't. I I hope we have that workshop here very soon, so.
I've watched how fast this government moves.
Then you're the government man now.
You can get a lot more with.
Yeah, okay. If anybody else?
Uh, mayor, just real quick, um, we did, there was a discussion at the county on the Fraser Valley Parkway. Um, they did get a report on the uh on some of the uh on the initial study they did. One of the things they have done is reached out uh of the, I'm sorry, uh, the county manager was directed by the chair to send a request specifically to Winter Park and to Fraser about a letter of support or a letter of interest or 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 issues that you may or may not have. So I do know that uh Mr. Moyer has reached out to uh Ed Cannon already, and so they're going to have some discussions, but it's highly likely that in July, you're going to be asked to consider some potential some potential form of uh of a resolution to either support the effort or support with modifications or or whatever that may be. So just know that those discussions are percolating along. Um, the commission, the B O C C is specifically looking for what these two communities want out of that. Um, and so that'll probably be the first step in a in a protracted conversation that at some point will involve how to identify funding and those things, but the first step will be to to is the is the town of Fraser and the town of Winter Park are they interested in this part? So anyway, um, Ed's already engaged with Mr. Moyer on that, and he'll be bringing something back, I anticipate in July perhaps.
I think they're looking for where exactly is is. Well, I saw that the objections are correct. I know it's very important. When we get that timeline, remember, be certain for something like tomorrow, it's just not going to happen. Keith and Mayor Park said.
Sorry, even Keith in Winter Park said uh yes, take that to the board, and I would want to bring staff's position on that to the board for discussions, we can consensus about what that letter should say so we can get that to them and be on record.
I mean, just just so, I mean, rumors have had it here that this this project is in some jeopardy, so. So let's let's get this to us sooner rather than later. It's real, I think it's extremely important. There's one of my top three right there, Parnell. I mean, I I think all of us understand what serious problems we have with an overloaded US forty and how desperately we need secondary routes, and that's the primary one right there. So I don't want this, I don't want the county dodging the, you know. The county needs to support us on this. We need to support the county on this a hundred percent.
Well, my goal is to bring this to the board at the next board meeting.
Perfect.
Yeah, so I I've already covered the uh American Funding Act and the grant requests that will be coming back at the July seventh. So those are the big ones for me, mayor. I do know that Antoinette has an update, I think my class.
Michael, why don't you start first? Right, so on Monday, uh, the Colorado Municipal League is having their annual business meeting, and part of that meeting is to elect uh the new executive board members for CML. Um, if that is something that you are tracking or not tracking, if you would like to provide any inputs um in the interim, and I think there's, I've been confused about how this has worked in the past, so I apologize if there's an excuse. Um, but I I've been designated as the delegate to actually vote for each of these members, and they're broken down by population size. So um we have this email if you're on the CML distribution list. Uh, if there's any input that you would like as far as uh provide myself as far as voting for these members, please do so. Um, any category that I don't receive any input from uh our board or mayor, um, I'll just basically make an informed decision based on the uh the descriptions of each applicant for each category and make my decision there, uh, just to to play an active role uh role for the for a town of Fraser actually being a part of this process. Um, so please, I do, uh, any inputs are very much appreciated. If you're missing that link or you need that information, please let me know. It should be in your email. Um, otherwise, uh, thank you for that. Um, additionally, you did ask about following Chris Michalowski's presentation from Mount Parks Electric, the last board meeting. Uh, it looked like there was some interest in diving deeper into an electric vehicle readiness plan. Um, I've kind of dug into a little bit for Durango and Pueblo County's uh electric vehicle readiness plan. And uh it's pretty comprehensive. I am looking at attending a seminar um on June twenty-second to get more information on that and really see how we can really um see what our options are as far as that plan and and looking at adopting that plan, if that's the intention for it. So uh so letting you know that I've worked on that. And tomorrow we are doing a community cleanup, where we are meeting at the Lions Ponds, and um we'll have trash bags, stickers, vests if needed if you're walking along the roads and staff at the uh Lions Ponds, Dizzy Bo. Uh, that was advertised a few weeks ago, if not more, uh, through our Facebook and our newsletter, and uh if you have any questions about that, please let me know. And we will be out there tomorrow from nine AM to four PM, and any and everyone is invited, and uh we'll keep things pretty informal, but have a good just so we're not sitting here by the same direction. Um, just basically pick up some trash on the trails, the river, the open space, our towns, uh right of ways, our streets, things of that nature, just to help uh pick up a little bit of stuff around town, so.
Maybe you have to get that far to plug in the morning. Couple times.
And that is all that I have, unless you have any questions about any of those items.
Yeah, Antoinette?
So um I just wanted to give the virtual meeting update. So um just wanted to kind of discuss the Zoom meeting platform that we're doing. So as you all know, the staff has implemented a live YouTube video for the public to watch in meetings, either live or they can watch it another time at their convenience. Um, we believe it creates transparency, and we will continue to livestream the town board meetings and the planning commission. We do not livestream the staff committees, which is the PAC and the EDAC. Uh, we do post the audio from those meetings on our website, so it does still have that transparency. Um, on May fifth, you guys did declare that the COVID nineteen public health emergency um within the town has passed, and the board room is now back at full capacity, and the public can attend in person. As you can see, our beautiful chairs are back out. Come and join us.
Gold, too.
Um, so we're requesting to stop the Zoom meeting platform for the open forum and resume the normal in-person communication from the public with the um for the port and the the board and the planning commission meetings. Um, we believe this in-person communication compete, uh creates transparency from the public also. Um, the Zoom meetings are cumbersome and challenging for the staff to manage, and some of the committee members um are not attending in person since the virtual option is available. Uh, we do believe the best practice is to conduct meetings when all members are present in one location. This facilitates a fluid conversation. Um, we would like to continue to allow the staff, board members, and presenters to attend the meeting via Zoom whenever it's necessary if they can't make it in person. We don't want that to go away. Um, so we are really just requesting that we stop the open forum via the Zoom. Um, and I would also like to, at a future meeting, bring back, we did start a remote meeting policy um before, just before COVID hit, and I'd like to bring that back to the board um in the near future to discuss again.
Any questions or concerns?
Basically, we'll queue this up with this policy that'll come back uh in front of you here, probably either July seventh or July twenty-first, I suspect. But we just want to give you a heads up, it's kind of.
Sounds like the only major thing there is you're suggesting that people not be allowed to provide responses via Zoom, the public.
Correct, during the live meeting.
Yeah.
But could still come in person.
Come here to make.
Just, yeah.
Yeah.
The way it was before COVID.
We still will maintain the YouTube livestream. Um, and we will still run a Zoom meeting, but as far as point form goes, that would just be simplified so that people that are um if they haven't contacted any of our elected before the meeting, um, they need to be a person to present who they are, where they live, and then provide that public comment in person.
Okay.
Thanks, everybody. Appreciate it.
Any other updates? Thank you, Antoinette.
From my, from your staff side.
Second?
All in favor? Opposed?
In the meetings.
Was that eight fifty-one, Antoinette?